I'd like to call to order the Joint City Council, Pierce County Council, Study Session of September 19th, 2023. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blocker, absent. Councilmember Bushnell.
President.
Councilmember Daniels, absent. Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Rumba.
Here.
Councilmember Ashka.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Woodard.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Kruever.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
The study session material was sent to you at 11:01.
Thank you very much. Our first agenda item today is the City of Tacoma and Pierce County Homeless Strategy and Funding Updates. What a wonderful day here in the city of Tacoma to be in a joint study session with the Pierce County Council. I think we were talking earlier, we think this has happened before, but it hasn't happened any time in the recent few, in the recent past. So this is quite a great day. And I think what's important about this day, and Councilmember Mello, Chair Mello, I'll turn it over to you for a few remarks as well, but I think this is how people expect their government to work. They expect us to sit down together, iron things out, and get the work done. They don't really care about whether it's in Pierce County, in the city of Tacoma, they just want issues solved, and especially as we're having this conversation today around homelessness, both in the city and in the county. We have a finite number of resources, and when we come together and plan together on how we focus on those in our community who need it the most, this is when we can leverage those resources and do a much better job for our community. So I'm just delighted to have the county council in our chambers today. While this may have been the first in recent history, I certainly hope that it will not be the last. We work together a lot even outside of this meeting, but I think it's incredibly powerful seeing us all sitting down together in the public's eye, for them to actually see us do the work. So grateful for the county council being here today, grateful for the city council, and all of you who are in the audience today. And I will turn it over to my good friend and the chair of the Pierce County Council for opening remarks, Councilmember Ryan Mello.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really great to be here. I want to thank you very much for the gracious hospitality. Thank you for welcoming the Pierce County Council in your chambers, and the staff for preparing for us. As you said, many of us work together, you know, offline all the time. We're having each other's phone numbers on speed dial, and they were constantly working on all kinds of issues. But the ability to come together in a joint session in the public's eye, as you say, is incredibly important, to have these conversations in public, share what we've done together, and express what our hopes and dreams are for forward movement. This topic in particular is, I know, of great import to both of our legislative bodies, our strategy around homeless interventions and prevention. I'm really, really pleased that our first joint session in recent memory is focused on this really important topic that is happening in our community, happening all across the West Coast, but, you know, we're not responsible for up and down the West Coast, we're responsible for Tacoma and Pierce County, Washington. So we're gonna, I know our staffs, just like we work together offline all the time, so too do our staffs, and I think we're gonna be able to showcase that during the presentations and discussion. This is not the first time the City of Tacoma Human Services staff is hearing from the Pierce County Human Services staff. They talk almost every day together and collaborate almost every day together, but this is an opportunity for us to hear that in public. We're gonna be able to have discussion together about what regional homelessness solutions look like, what they should look like. And that's really important, because we know from the last point in time count, close to 75% of individuals who are experiencing homelessness, close to 75%, have a last-known address that is not Tacoma. So Tacoma is often having to face the many struggles and the many responsibilities for funding resources, funding programs to help people see their way out of homelessness, but their last-known address and where their homelessness incident started, most times, is not in Tacoma. So we're here to explore that, explore how we can continue to work even more together, and I'm excited for this conversation, and Mayor Woodard's very grateful for your hospitality. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chair Mello. I also meant to ask you, how does it feel to be sitting at this dais again? It's been a while. Well, let's just, let's jump into the presentation, and we are both incredibly lucky to have amazing staff who work on this issue. So we're gonna start with the Director of our Neighborhood and Community Services, Director Allison Griffith, and then after Allison's done, we will hear from Heather Moss and her team at Pierce County, who will share their information with us as well. So Allison, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Woodard, Chair Mello, and members of the city and county councils, those of you that I don't know. My name is Allison Griffith, and I am the Director of Neighborhood and Community Services. DeAngelo, we have another presentation.
Yeah, that's the wrong one.
City logo presentation. We'll wait just a minute. I wish I had jokes, I'm sorry, everyone. Can I sing or tap? No, you wouldn't want that, Mayor. I was not hired for my singing or tap dancing ability. Councilmember Diaz wants me to know that's other duties as assigned, so singing and tap dancing.
We're gonna take a quick three-minute recess to get that power, find that PowerPoint, that PowerPoint, and get this meeting started. So we're in recess for three minutes. I'd like to call back to order the Joint City Council, Pierce County Council, Study Session of September 19th, 2023. We have our PowerPoint, we are ready to go. Allison, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I apologize for the delay. Excuse me. So for those of you I haven't had the opportunity to meet, I am Allison Griffith, Director of Neighborhood and Community Services for the City of Tacoma. I am here today in a joint presentation with my counterpart, Pierce County Human Services Director Heather Moss, so I will turn the presentation to her at the end. We were asked to give both councils a little grounding in homeless services, including a brief update on budget and accomplishments in each of our strategic plans, so that's what I'll walk through now. DeAngelo, next slide, please. Okay. For orientation purposes, I wanted to provide an overview of the structure of Neighborhood and Community Services, and let you know that we have two primary focus areas for addressing homelessness in our department. One is our Homeless Engagement and Alternatives Liaison, or HEAL Team. That's our team primarily responsible for outreach to individuals experiencing homelessness in encampments throughout the city. And our council heard, excuse me, heard from that team last week on an update on their work on TMC 8.19. The other half of homeless work in our department is the Homeless Strategy Systems and Services Team, and that team has the responsibility to implement our homeless strategy, as well as manage the contracts related to homeless services. So you can see there how they fit in with the rest of the department. Next slide, please. This is to refresh on the city's homeless strategy. The city's homelessness strategy was delivered to the council in September of 2022. Importantly, that strategy is aligned with the county's comprehensive plan to end homelessness, and in a moment you'll see exactly how we note that alignment as we're updating our council. The goal of both the city and county's plans are, excuse me, are to achieve functional zero, which is, while we acknowledge that ending homelessness is almost impossible, we do aim to make it brief, rare, and one-time, through prioritizing folks' access to emergency shelter and permanent housing. Next slide, please, DeAngelo. This slide details the five goals of the city's homeless strategy. Under each of the goals, you will see items that have been completed since the launch of the strategy, and/or that the department has made significant progress on. Goals are how our vision and mission take form and become things that we measure in action and effort. Goals identify where we want to be as we address those three primary areas of prevention, crisis response, and housing. And we've developed these goals to encompass the needs of our entire community by transforming the system to meet those needs. As we move through implementation of the strategy, we will continue to invite feedback from stakeholders, including individuals with lived experience, to ensure alignment and continue to stay nimble and flexible in our responses as the needs change. Under each goal are actions we are currently implementing. You will also see two actions which are labeled CPEH, which represent actions directly aligned with the county's comprehensive plan to end homelessness. The major action I would like to highlight is under Goal Two, which is the creation of a by-name list. Both the city and county strategies identify this as the preferred method to understand the scope and need of the homelessness issue for both the city and county. A universal by-name list is proposed by both strategies, and has been discussed cross-jurisdictionally to align and practice on how to accurately count people who are experiencing homelessness. Ultimately, this list would include all people who are experiencing homelessness in Pierce County, who stay at a shelter, work with an outreach provider, or are at any point in our response system. Currently, the city is underway in developing a list for City of Tacoma specifically, and we hope to pilot this list and work on a standard operating procedure for effective Similarly, under Goal Five, the acquisition of Aspen Court was a multi-jurisdictional effort, including the City of Tacoma, Pierce County, and the City of Lakewood. This project has allowed the use of the property for shelter, while the building owner, which is Low Income Housing Institute, or LEHI, prepares for a transition to permanent housing. This is another example of alignment across the city and county in implementing our strategic priorities. The city also served on the steering committee responsible for the development of the county's comprehensive plan, and continues to serve on the advisory board to provide both guidance and collaboration to finding practical and operational solutions to addressing homelessness. Next slide, please, DeAngelo. In addition to helping the city and county council understand our structure, we thought it would also be helpful to provide an understanding of funding structure and expenditures. Here's a breakdown of the city's homeless services budget by funding source. The city's total investment in homelessness for the 2023-2024 biennium is $35.7 million. This is made up of $11.7 million in mental health and substance use disorder sales tax, that's the one tenth of 1% sales tax, and just over $24 million in general fund. $10 million of the 24 million, so 10 of that big old blue piece of the pie, demonstrated here is one-time investment meant to support the city's emergency and temporary shelter operations. As a reminder to city council, the city is facing a $10 to $12 million funding gap beginning in the 25-26 biennium, should you wish to extend the operation of shelters past 2024. Next slide, please. This graphic is meant to demonstrate for both councils, the breakdown of the $35.7 million invested by services. You will see here that the city has made investment in sheltering a priority, with the remaining $10 million spread across service areas, primarily including housing services, encampment response, and prevention. Housing services generally include connection to health services needs, temporary financial assistance, utility assistance, case management services to maintain housing, and prevention generally includes rental assistance, day services for youth, and rehabilitation costs for the Beacon Youth Shelter upgrades. As stated, this is meant to be, Mayor, a very brief, high-level overview of the city's strategy and investments. I'm happy to pause and take questions on any of this information, or hand it over to Heather, whichever you prefer.
Chair Mello, if it's okay with you, we like to do presentations and then take questions, so does it make sense to go ahead and bring Heather up now?
We're in your house, Mayor.
Okay. Come on forward, Heather.
Good afternoon, city council members, county council members, and members of the public. For the record, my name is Heather Moss, I'm the Director of Human Services for Pierce County, and I'm nervous. I don't, it's the new, new environment, way too many elected officials in one room for my appetite. I just want to start off by thanking Allison for saying such great things about our partnership, and noting all of the ways that we align across our two jurisdictions. Councilmember Mello, Chair Mello, mentioned that we talk on a regular basis, Allison and I, and that's no exaggeration. We and our teams are working together regularly, understanding that a lot of the services that may be providing services and support across the county do in fact originate here in Tacoma, and so there's a lot of coordination to be done. So with that, I have a slide deck, a short slide deck, that largely aligns with Allison's, I think it'll give you a nice perspective and a compare and contrast between the city and the council, or the city and the county and the way we do things. Next slide, please. So again, just following Allison's lead here, I wanted to give you a little bit of a highlight of how our organization is structured. Pierce County Human Services has a staff of approximately 275 individuals. You can see the five service divisions that we have up there, one of which is Community Services, and that's where our homeless team resides. We do not have an outreach team like the one that Allison described, so our team is more on the contracting side of things. That's the six FTEs you see here, under the management of John Barbie, our Community Services Division Manager. Next slide, please. Again, largely aligned with the City of Tacoma, and you heard Allison talk about this, the City of Tacoma, or the county council adopted the Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness in March of 2022. In the 18 months since then, we've been working hard to use that comprehensive plan, not only to outline the work that we do at the county level, but to align the work we're doing with our jurisdictional partners as well. Just by way of background, how we got to the Comprehensive Plan, way back in 2020, middle of the pandemic, we were faced with an audacious proposal. What would it take to end homelessness in Pierce County? In response to that, we formed an ad hoc work group in 2020 to consider options for ending street homelessness. That led to formalizing that work group into an ad hoc committee that was then charged to work with the department to create the Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness. As I said, that plan was adopted by the county council in March of 2022, along with memorializing that work group slash ad hoc committee into an advisory board that still meets on a regular basis and works with county staff. Next slide, please. So, there are six goals of the Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness. If you read them, they would not strike you as particularly earth-shattering. The idea is that they are fairly logical, but the good goal here is that we want to create some aligned thinking and prioritization about how we provide services across jurisdictions in, here in Pierce County. The first one that we'll spend a lot more time on in a couple of presentations later in this meeting, is to create a unified regional system and response. This is really in reaction to the reality that homelessness does not stop at any of our borders, and that it really requires a shared regional response to be effective in how we address homelessness. More to come on that one. The second goal is to use data to ensure interventions are effective. I'm really proud to tell you that we have developed scorecards that show provider performance across our homeless system. We also have developed a dashboard that shows overall outputs and outcomes for our homeless system, and we have all of that on a website that you can look at. If you Google Pierce County Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness, there's lots of information there. Third goal seems pretty obvious, prevent homelessness. I will say, though, that this takes a little bit of thinking, because when you talk about solving homelessness, we often think about the immediate needs of people who are living without housing, and that is getting them into shelter, helping them find permanent housing opportunities. We all know too, though, that one of the most cost-effective ways to avoid homelessness is through prevention efforts, and we did a lot of that work during the pandemic, when we created the Eviction Prevention and Rental Assistance Program, and we prevented so many thousands of families from entering into homelessness during that time, by preventing that and giving them small stipends to help bridge the gap in their rental costs. So we are stepping into, in the last couple of years, into prevention in a way that the county has not been before. And I say that that requires a little bit of thinking, because it's absolutely a trade-off, right? When you don't have enough dollars to stretch for all of the needs that you have to address a given issue, whether it's homelessness, or health, or what have you, it takes a little bit of effort to pull some of those dollars out of addressing immediate need to go further upstream and look at prevention. We're trying to find the right balance there, but it is absolutely important that we consider both intervention and prevention in our approach. The fourth goal is ensuring adjacent programs meet the needs of our homeless population. This is a little more of an administrative and housekeeping goal, but it's acknowledging that there are many places where our homeless individuals interact with larger systems, whether that's law enforcement, first responders, medical, could also be with our housing, just our housing in general. So we need to make sure that those other areas of service to the community understand how to meet the needs of the homeless population, and also are aligned with the work that we're doing to address homelessness. Fifth is to meet immediate needs of those experiencing homelessness. Again, on the face of it, that sounds pretty obvious, but something else that's new in Pierce County funding at least, is that we've started to lean much more into funding shelters than we have in the past. In the past, the county really focused on housing as the primary and initial goal of funding for addressing homelessness. Primarily during COVID, we really pivoted more to getting, helping people get off of the streets and become sheltered in some way. It's really the first step in getting them housed, so we've spent more money than we have historically on investing in our shelter system across Pierce County, including here in Tacoma. And then finally, again, another obvious one is expand permanent housing. We are fortunate in Pierce County to have not only additional support from the state of Washington, but the county council recently approved the use of the Affordable Housing Tax, so we are starting to see more funding coming into our community to address permanent housing needs of our community. That's probably another whole presentation to talk about affordable housing, but in short, we need a whole lot more than we have now. Next slide, please. Okay, so, much like Allison already shared with you, I wanted to give a quick overview of where our funding comes from and how much we spend on a regular basis in Pierce County. It's fascinating, actually, to compare this with what, how Tacoma does this. You can see here the various fund sources that we have over the current biennium, that's '22-'23, and then what's projected for the next biennium that begins in January. So we spend between $40 and $50 million. It was a little bit higher during the pandemic, we're starting to see some of those numbers come down and stabilize and shift around a little bit. A couple of other takeaways, I think, here that are important to note are, unlike the city that funds their homeless response with general fund dollars and behavioral health tax, we don't have either of those fund sources reflected in our fund source. In contrast, our funding comes from state and, well, some local, right, the document recording fee, but then primarily state and federal allocations, which are meant to cover countywide, not just outside of Tacoma. So those are dollars that are meant to cover Tacoma services, as well as the balance of the county. The other takeaway that I want to point out here is eviction prevention. Again, as I said earlier, that is a new thing for us. It is part of the expansion of the document recording fee that the state legislature passed last year, I think it was. So we are using those dollars to create a permanent program, recognizing that rental assistance is so important in the scope of prevention of homelessness. And then finally, one last takeaway here is the right-of-way funding. You may have seen this in the news a couple of times, it's dollars that were identified by Governor Inslee to help clear or help house people who are living in public rights-of-way, so the rights-of-way primarily on state public lands adjacent to major highways and other thoroughfares. Those dollars were initially allocated directly from the State Department of Commerce. Just this year, they are transferring those dollars to the county to administer on behalf of the state. So while you see big dollars there, they're not necessarily new services, but we will be managing those contracts that the Department of Commerce already put in place. Okay, next slide, please. Again, following Allison's lead, this just shows you, at least for this current biennium, how those dollars are being split out. Again, I will highlight here that unlike years previous, we are spending more in emergency shelter than the county has in the past. That's the gray slice you see towards the bottom. And then the brown slice towards the top there is eviction prevention, that also is a new way of the county spending money. So there's some shifts, I didn't share with you what it looks like over time. Obviously, those two things include some shifts in how we spend money, but overall, the pie is getting bigger as well, so just important to keep in mind. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna pause, because I believe now Social Change Partners is queued up to give you a presentation to talk about Recommendation One, going back to the beginning where I talked about those six recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan, and then I will come back up and I will share the last couple of slides I have. So this is where we transition, unless you have questions for either me or Allison.
Why don't we go ahead, before we transition into another presentation, because the slides you're gonna finish up with, is that the rest of our conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Well then, let's go ahead, and if, are there any questions just about what's been laid out, both the City of Tacoma strategy and the county strategy? Are there any specific questions regarding that? Deputy Mayor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is maybe a question for some follow-up, but I love having the budgets next to each other, but I have lots of questions, because the categories aren't exactly the same, right? And I know there are some things that the city does, and some things the county does, and I think it'd be really interesting to look at a side-by-side. Have you all done that, or is that something we could get in the future?
We have not, but I'll put it on our to-do list.
And I guess maybe a general question, because maybe that's a very heavy lift, but are there things that, generally, are there things that either of us can do, that the other can't, and vice versa? Or how do you decide, is it good if we're all in every bucket, or do we divide and conquer? What's your approach to that?
No, that's a great question, and I think that gets to what I was talking about in terms of the county shifting to funding more shelter. In the past, the unofficial response has been, local jurisdictions are paying for shelter in their communities, county is doing sort of some of the bigger things. It got too big for any one jurisdiction to really handle that, so it became important for the county to also invest in sheltering. We have not talked specifically about overarching goals and priorities, but we absolutely talk on a regular basis about what the city is funding, and where the county should be joining them, or funding in different ways. In terms of what it looks like relative one versus the other, I think the city, just by the nature of being a local jurisdiction, is much more invested in local and direct response. You have more to add?
Thank you, Heather. The only other thing, Deputy Mayor, that I would highlight for you is, and Heather did a nice job of talking about the shift in eviction prevention, so the city made a conscious choice to step away from our investment in some of those eviction prevention efforts. You might remember, we had a robust emergency rental assistance during the COVID pandemic, but because we knew the county was going to act in that way, we did make a choice to shift some of those funds. That is what is allowing us to do some of the investment in our sheltering operations.
Great, thank you, and thank you both for the presentations. It's just really great to see how far we've come, even in the short amount of time that I've been on council.
Thanks. Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Walker. I'm gonna call on Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for all your work. I really appreciated how Director Griffith listed the goals, and then some of the sub-action items under those goals indicating which had been accomplished, and which also corresponded to our Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness. So I know we've also accomplished a lot of the sub-action items under our six goals. So I know we've also accomplished a lot of the sub-action items under our six goals. And so I'm wondering, and this may not be something you can answer now because there's a lot of them, but I'd love to see which correspond with Tacoma's plan. And then moving forward, and I'm sure you both are already doing this, are you talking about maybe looking at those sub-action items that do correspond to each other and figuring out, you know, what's the low-hanging fruit? What's the medium difficulty? Where can we really make some, where can we move the needle and get these done together so that we can start ticking them off and hopefully then making, make more progress, sorry, make more progress towards accomplishing the overall goals? I'm just looking for action items where we can really move that needle.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Denson. So what may not have been clear in my remarks is, we do have a staff member who's assigned to sit on the advisory committee for the comprehensive plan implementation. And so, yes, Caleb is regularly engaged in exactly that discussion of low-hanging fruit. What is the county focused on? How can we assist as a jurisdiction? And then, as Heather referenced, we meet on a biweekly basis, so Heather, John, and I are constantly talking about kind of, again, what's coming down the pipe and what might we need to make decisions about, what kind of, particularly from a funding perspective, do we need to be aware of and thinking about those strategically? I don't know if you have other thoughts.
Yeah, I would just add a couple of things. We actually have a group of jurisdictional partners that are meeting, is it weekly or every other week? So beyond just the city and the county, we have a group of folks who are coming together and are largely aligned around the comprehensive plan to end homelessness. But I appreciate your point about looking at the sub-actions and doing some crosswalking there. We just yesterday posted a new position that the county council funded a few months ago to help us bring back some executive-level capacity to do some of that crosswalking work.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you, Chair Mello.
Thank you, Mayor Woodruff. You said in your opening remarks, Mayor, how wonderful it was going to be to see the two directors leading this work side-by-side, and now that we actually see it, I couldn't agree more. A great visual of cooperation. Just a couple of brief questions. Very much appreciate both of you preparing these presentations for our community. Do we both explicitly, both the city and the county, explicitly have the goal of functional zero? Do we use that same language and have that same specific goal?
Yes.
That's great. Two follow-up questions. In neither, it's great that I think both the county and the city in very recent times, the county just earlier this year, and I think the City of Tacoma sometime last year, passed the House Bill 1590 funds, the 1/10th, the 1% dedicated to housing, affordable housing and related services. In neither of your, I know where the county is at on this. Director Moss and her team is developing a plan for council consideration about how to invest those $15, $90, but our city colleagues have not had the chance to hear that yet. In neither of your presentations, you don't call out those dollars, and I'm, the City of Tacoma calls out the mental health substance abuse disorder dollars, makes complete sense, and some of your other financial investments, that's all great, but I'm curious, you don't call out the 1590 funds as any part of your strategy, but those are major investments by both of us and major accomplishments. I'm wondering if you have some thoughts on that.
Yes, Chair Mello, from the city perspective, I can share that our housing investments are actually managed by our Community Economic Development Department. So, well, I didn't think that it was probably germane to this presentation to necessarily dive deeply into that conversation. City council is very well aware, not only of Jeff's plan to implement the use of those 1590 funds, but also the really critical intersection between our sheltering work and those affordable housing dollars. So we spend a lot of time with city council talking about, they've seen a bar graph, which I did not bring with me today, but showing kind of our plan stepped down from shelter into that permanent supportive housing work, and again, still talking about that gap that we will need even regardless of that work. So it is a critical piece. Also, if we looked at the full document, and again, today we were focused on highlighting our partnership with the county, but if we looked at the full document of the homeless strategy, we also make very explicit reference to the Affordable Housing Action Strategy, which is the city's document that guides the investment of those funds and our work around affordable housing. So you are absolutely correct to point out that that is really critical investment and is necessary to us achieving our goals, so thank you.
You're going to get two answers for every question you ask, but they're always very similar answers. As you know, we have been directed by council to create a plan for spending the Maureen Howard Affordable Housing Act dollars. We are working on that plan now, actually vetting it with some of our partners across the community. We are looking at the predominance of those dollars going into affordable housing for our low and very low-income populations. Obviously, that is a crucial part of our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. There's additionally a 20% set aside. Our early thinking is that that needs to be dedicated to the operation of services within a permanent supportive housing environment. So more to come on that, but it's absolutely a key part of our homeless approach.
Thank you. Mayor, last question, I know time is short. Great to see the alignment of the strategies and the goals, and we know a tremendous amount of work happens behind the scenes on the public's behalf by both of your teams. What could be the plan to better highlight alignment of metrics? What we're measuring? How we're measuring it? What results are happening? What is your early thinking about how we can align metrics and be more consistent and up-to-date and public about that, regardless of which jurisdiction might be leading the work?
There are lots of aspirational directions that we could take about coordinated, whether that's applications or pooling of funding. Those feel a little far away, frankly, but I think the first step is talking about the performance metrics that we're using and the performance outcomes that we're seeing from providers. As I mentioned in my presentation, we have just started creating those performance scorecards for providers, and we'll be using those out in the community, and I think that presents a great opportunity to compare notes, if you will, across the jurisdictions.
Chair Mello, Heather's absolutely correct. The primary conversation we've been having is around alignment of our performance metrics. The other thing that I might just draw attention to, the county does a wonderful job of dashboarding some of the progress that they're making on the comprehensive plan on your website. The city has a similar desire to get to that dashboard point. We're not quite there. We were hoping we would be there by this update, but we're a little bit behind that. But we do have an intention of making that information very public for, to your point, be able to follow along as we implement these various parts of the strategy.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I think this question would probably go to Allison. Heather, you're off the hook.
All right.
I'm curious to learn a little bit about the by-name list that you said that you've made some headway with, because that's something the county's been really interested in.
Sure, absolutely. So I talked just very briefly about our homeless engagement alternatives liaison, our HEAL team. And as Heather pointed out, that is unique to the city's structure over the county's structure. So we do have eight FTE that are assigned to that team who perform regular outreach. So as a result of their work, they are basically keeping a list of individuals that they interact with in our encampments, and then they are working with our homeless strategy folks to think about how do we manage that list, who has access to that list, and what do we do with that with regards to our providers, working through that list, getting folks either sheltered or housed, depending on what they need. So we're at the very kind of beginning stages of that. We have the list, so to speak, and are working through more of the management practices at this point in time.
Okay, good to hear.
I just want to add something.
Go for it.
I know you said I didn't have to, but we are, we're working on by-name lists for sub-populations in the county. So for our homeless youth and our veteran population, we have, we're in the sort of detail, figuring out the detailed stages for both of those by-name lists, but actively working on developing those.
Thank you. I think that sounds wonderful. I know one of the things that I've noticed in communities that are making good headway on this is really that sharing of data, so they're able to track and get in front of problems before they rise. So the more information we have about the people we're trying to serve, I think, the better we will be as a community working on this. So thank you for that work, and I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Something for each director here. I'll start with Director Griffiths. Following up, and I think Chair Mello mentioned the 1590 funds, so I was glad to see the permanent supportive housing, because if we just looked at your graph, it would say the city's not doing it. I know you guys do have a plan around that, so I'm glad you're working on that. In your allocation, you have about a third of your revenue coming from the mental health and substance use disorder sales tax. And I'm curious as to how, you know, what, do you just kind of put all these together and this is what you work on, or are there specific things you're working on with that portion of the tax?
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. So last week, Community Vitality and Safety Committee for the City Council received a presentation from a consultant that we have engaged around an assessment of our expenditure of mental health and substance use disorder funds. So I would say that to this point, yes, we have generally utilized it, and the primary utilization of those is to support shelter operations, right? So generally, in our shelter operations, we split 50/50 between mental health and substance use disorder and then general fund support. But what that consultant is doing is actually assessing what our expenditure has been to date and then what it should be based on what the issue's facing, both the city and the county. They are going to work with county staff around their investment as well. So looking forward to perhaps a more strategic look going forward.
I am kind of following. Thank you very much for that and all your work on this. Following up slightly on that with Director Moss, we don't list our mental health, substance use disorder dollars as part of our homeless strategy. How are we intersecting that and how much might we actually be using towards that?
Yeah, so our staff work very closely across divisions to accomplish some coordination there. So we have the Behavioral Health Division, managed by Margot Bernenson, and they are obviously putting a lot of effort into behavioral health services, either embedded in our shelter program or otherwise connected to current or formerly homeless individuals. So it absolutely is happening. I think at some point, we had to draw the line about what's inside this box and what isn't, but there's definitely a dotted line between the two. I will say that that's true also for huge sound taxpayer accountability dollars, for the $15, $90, the Maureen Howard Affordable Housing Act dollars. So there's lots of connections and overlaps, and that coordination is happening both within our department and between jurisdictions.
And if we could get a follow-up, or if we were to look at those three funds you just mentioned, an estimate of how much is being applied towards homelessness, so we could get, you know, a truer accounting of how much we are investing in homelessness prevention and services. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Rumba.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank both Heather and Allison for this report. I really appreciate this. It's something that I wanted to see us do, and I'm very happy to hear us together working on this. I have two questions. I'm going to just ask Heather, like, when you talked about rental assistance, it's something I've brought up that was really, I know, very helpful and effective in keeping people housed. And I know your dollars have dwindled, and I'm wondering, off the top of your head, or at some point, if you could give us an amount that you think of rental assistance dollars we actually need in our community?
Okay, the best I can do is tell you what we spent over two and a half years of our pandemic response, and that was about $180 million across the county. Pretty significant amount of dollars. We served thousands of families. I think it was over 10,000 families received those dollars for up to 12 months of rental assistance. The challenge I think we have now is that the economy has changed to such an extent that it's difficult to determine how many people are unable to go back to work, which was sort of the biggest issue around COVID, is that people couldn't earn the money that they needed to pay their rent because things were closed down to such an extent. So while we are very proud of the fact that we have about $6 million a year going to the eviction prevention program, you're right to presume that that's not quite enough, but that's true, I would suggest, throughout the whole system.
Right, right. But we do know that that was effective.
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay, that's one question. The other one is, I've brought this up to Allison before, and I guess Allison is on my, was just basically having you both here. This is a picture of what the homeless issue looks like and what we're spending on it. And when we have an update from Allison about the homeless, what we're doing for homelessness, it doesn't include what the county's doing. And I think you can't talk about the city of Tacoma doing homelessness without talking about what the county's doing, because we know that it's not just people who live in the city that are homeless. We know they're coming to the city because we have services. And so I think, like, it would be wonderful if this could be a more unified picture more often, and I'm wondering if we could get to something like that. So there's more transparency, and we give a report, and it's the full spending that we're making. So it doesn't just show Tacoma, it shows the county and what you're doing as part of this, so we can figure out where the holes are, because we know that there are places where just not meeting the needs of people who live in our community.
That's the point of the second half of the presentation, I believe.
So that's perfect, thank you.
It is, thank you. Councilmember Bushnell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for being here. This is phenomenal. And I kind of had some similar questions as Chair Mello did regarding metrics, and so thank you for asking those questions. But prior to that, you had mentioned definitions, and are we working on the same definitions for a lot of things? Is a shelter in Tacoma the same as a shelter in Pierce County and how we define that? Obviously, I know in Tacoma specifically, we have a multitude of shelter types. Are we, do we still have those same definitions to help with those metrics?
Councilmember Bushnell, I'll start, and then Heather can clean up if I miss anything. But yes, generally, we do work off the same definitions. The county is slightly more constrained because they have some federal regulations that require them, in some cases, to consider housing or shelter a certain type, but it doesn't generally prevent them from investing. You might remember they're supporting our micro-shelter example on Sixon Orchard, for example. So, but yes, generally around definitions, we are using the same thing. And Heather talked about our biweekly, multi-jurisdictional conversation. That's where that staff really dives into that piece and that conversation. And that also, Councilmember, I believe is really the work Heather and I are interested in doing around aligning our performance management conversation, right? So really getting to, when we say bed night, this is what we mean. When the county says bed night, it means the same thing that it means for the city, right? So, yeah. Ooh, I finally got one, she had nothing to add.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you for that, and I'm really, really excited for the partnership and the work we're doing. And I really appreciate the work that the county has been doing with the City of Tacoma thus far, and I think we're going to do a lot more together in the near future. Just a few quick questions on the county side regarding some of your funding sources. Is some of, like, the right-of-way funding specifically, is that allocated from the state specifically to the county, or do we also have access to those funds in the city as well? I'm curious about that.
Those dollars are allocated directly to the county, but they are meant to be used across the county. So as it stands now, those dollars came to us with contracts already in place, so there's not a lot of play in terms of what we fund. We do have to reapply for those dollars to the state every year, so we will be putting out a new application, or a new proposal for using those dollars, and we will do that with input from our local jurisdictional partners.
Is there flexibility in those funds? Is it directly just for sheltering only, or can they be used in a variety of ways to fit the needs of the community?
So the state is pretty constrained in what they want us to use those dollars for. It's some part of shelter, but it's mostly for permanent housing is the goal that they set. So whenever folks are given opportunities to move off of those rights-of-way, it's, we have to be able to offer them permanent housing. There is new language in the dollars or in the contract, I guess, that would allow us to use up to 20% of those funds for things that might be happening outside of the right-of-way system, but we need to dive into that a little bit more before we figure out what to do with that.
Great, thank you. And does it take a jurisdiction to come to you with a plan in order to access those funds? Or is there something proactive happening at the county level where you might go out to, I'll just use an example, the City of Lakewood, which has I-5 and certainly faces their own challenges, is coming to them with a proposal to use those funds in order to support their community as well?
So the local jurisdictions with I-5, that touch on I-5 have all been part of the conversations with the Department of Commerce, identifying priority. with the Department of Commerce identifying priorities and opportunities around using those dollars. So FIF is at the table, Lakewood is at the table, Tacoma as well. We have not yet, we just got those dollars transitioned into the county. So we haven't figured out what that will look like. But I imagine it will be much the same, where we're all sitting at the table making decisions together about how to spend those dollars.
Great, thank you for that. And then I'm really, really glad to hear about the eviction prevention work that you all are doing. I think, you know, one of the best ways to end homelessness is to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place. And the, the amount of pandemic response assistance, 180 million is, it's amazing, but it also really goes to show to the great need. And I don't think, since the pandemic response, you know, that need has gone away. Especially with the economics, the way they are, housing instability, the way it is, and the, the cost of housing as a whole. Is there any anticipation that we might be able to receive additional federal funds for that? And then my second question to that is, is, I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume, the city of Tacoma, renters also have access to those funds as well for the whole county?
Yes, yes, because we are managing it on behalf of the full county. In terms of federal dollars, I haven't heard any news about potential new federal dollars coming for rental assistance or eviction prevention. The dollars that we're using now are the additional dollars passed by the state legislature around the document recording fee. So it's, it's local, state dollars at this point that we're using for that program.
Great, thank you. And, and because this is a regional issue and we need to work together, has there been any coordination at the government affairs level between our teams in order to look at our legislative agendas and see where we might be aligned and work as a team together to access these federal and state dollars?
So again, we have a little bit different structure between the city and the county in terms of government affairs. But to the extent that we can coordinate, Allison and I are absolutely doing that. And I'm, we're having regular conversations with our respective government affairs-like staff and colleagues.
Great, thank you. I would love to be able to support work that the county is doing to, to help us regionally. And I'm sure vice versa as well. So if there is, do you guys have, I don't know if you have a legislative priority document, but something along those lines, I think would be really helpful for us to work on together in the future.
Right.
I'm sure I could keep going, so I'll just end there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushnell. And I believe our government relations staff already works together in our legislative agenda. So unbeknownst to us, that does already, that does already happen. And I know that we've been, we've been brought things in the past that the county wants us to support. I think we've done vice versa. So that does, that in addition to these two working together, it happens outside, it happens with our government relation teams. I just was telling Chair Mello, when you're the last one to go, all the questions have been asked. So I'll save anything I had, it was already asked. And then I think we'll move on to the other presentation, Heather, that you were alluding to. And I don't, oh, oh, it's online. I was like, and I don't have, I don't have a list, I don't have a name of who I'm calling on, Reed, so it's you.
Yeah, I believe it's me. My name is Reed Canell. I'm with Social Change Partners and I'm joined by my colleague, Brian Maylock. We do have a brief PowerPoint. Is it, that staff able to bring that up? Okay, I actually had a, a separate deck in, I think this is still Director Moss's deck.
We're working on it.
Okay, no problem.
Madam Mayor, would it be helpful if Director Moss introduced this item just a little bit more for, for context while we're getting the deck ready?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Member, Chair Mello. So as part of the comprehensive plan to end homelessness that was passed by the council in March of 2022, again, remember, the first of six recommendations was to create a unified regional approach. What does the governance structure look like so that we can share some responsibility around addressing homelessness? The first step was the council authorizing us to spend a little bit of money to hire a consultant, Social Change Partners. And they did some extensive focus groups and interviews here in Pierce County, but also looking at other models nationally. So that's what Reed and his partner are here to present to you, the information that they collected and presented to us in February of this year, I believe it was.
Excellent, thanks. Well, I'm, so again, my name is Reed Canell. I'm with the consulting firm, Social Change Partners. We did respond to RFP from the, from Director Moss's agency. And we're selected to lead this important work. And let me just say first, it was, it was a real privilege. I do have some, some connections in Washington State, in Tacoma, and graduated from Evergreen. And it was still a, a real privilege to connect with members of the community. We spoke with all, all kinds of folks, from elected officials, to members of the faith community, to people with lived experience, and the members of the Now Implementation Advisory Board, as well as providers throughout the county. It was a privilege to come to understand all the important work that, that, that everyone is doing to try and address this really very urgent issue. My, my first few slides here are largely information that I think was already kind of covered in the prior presentations. So if you could click through, you know, that's just to say again that this was the first recommendation of the comprehensive plan, was to take this unified regional approach. And it should be said that that unified regional approach, it, it, it mostly means what the word means, what the words mean, right? As in bringing together jurisdictions and authorities from across a region to take a, a unified approach to address homelessness. But it's also been kind of jargonized in the world of homeless policy conversation. And, and that was reflected a little bit as we moved towards the options. And I'll, I'll talk about that in just a minute. But often, when homeless advocates and administrators talk about unified regional approach, they are talking about a formal structure that is at least established through an MOU, if not through an inter-local agreement. Next slide, please. So this was the overarching vision of the comprehensive plan. I think this quote was up prior, integrated, adaptable, and responsive. And then supporting restorations, stability, self-determination of everyone. Not much to say about that, except to say that we hold up the, you know, that the administrative and governance structures that we'll talk about in a moment are certainly all intended to advance this vision. Next slide, please. It was important for me to start every presentation by saying that there was a very, a very intentional and very thoughtful process of examining the underlying values and, and kind of writing those into the plan. These are those that were articulated directly in the plan and that were affirmed repeatedly throughout the process. It's, it also should be said that these are points at which the community is very interested in understanding the efforts, the commitments, how those commitments are, are actualized. And it was very much my experience that the community is, is very interested in seeing these values manifested and made real. Next slide, please. So this is just to say, you know, I think it was important to say that, you know, this work was undertaken, as everyone has acknowledged, at a time in which homelessness is, is a really pressing issue for, for local government and for members of the community. The scale and scope of suffering, you know, and suffering by a full, broad range of stakeholders, from people experiencing homelessness, to those who are trying to serve them, to those who are trying to operate businesses in certain impacted areas, and so on. I heard just from a lot of people that it was a very pressing issue from across the entire continuum. Also heard that there's strain on public systems that arises from the scale and intensity of the current crisis, that there were economic impacts and at least fears and concerns about economic impacts. And then I also heard that the community is really looking to leadership, or looking for leadership, as to how to address, address homelessness, given this, what feels, what had felt certainly last fall, when I was talking with people most, most in-depth, what felt like a worsening crisis. Next slide, please. So the reason that a unified regional approach is a thing is because it has benefits, right? And, you know, we've heard allusion to, you know, multiple public agencies that have a role in administering the system, multiple governing bodies that oversee those agencies and that approve decisions and make spending decisions. We've also heard about the complexity of the funding of the overall homeless response, there being many, many different funding sources, some locally generated and locally controlled, some federal, some state, some one-time, some ongoing. So it should be said, right, that in that environment, an administrative complexity, part of the reason for taking a unified regional approach is to find efficiencies as well as to achieve alignment and ensure that if there is a, a very thoughtful and intentional vision for the continuum of responses, that they are appropriately located and resourced, you know, in terms of their actual implementation. So these are kind of four buckets that we offered as arising from our research as to what can be accomplished through a formal structure, a formal unified regional approach. One is fundraising and revenue maximization. It's to say that there are opportunities to secure either through taking an administrative role in discretionary funding sources or securing state and federal grants. There are opportunities to actually increase the amount of resources that are available to address the challenge. There are also the opportunity to make improvements to procurement and contract monitoring. I think it's important to say that in the comprehensive plan, it described the unified regional approach as having discretion over funding and contracting. So it was kind of baked into the premise for our research that that procurement role was something that had been largely already decided or determined to be advantageous. The assumption there is whether, on the kind of the data question that was just raised in, in the discussion, right? Having, you know, standard sets of metrics and unified and coordinated data collection across these different pillars or service lines within the overall response. That's something that can be made more, better organized through a centralized procurement function as well as, you know, the, the initial procurement itself and then ongoing oversight. I guess that kind of bridges those, two of those bullet points there, both contract monitoring and, and data collection analysis and reporting. I will say, on the third bullet about data collection, analysis, and reporting, there's what you have, what you're requiring of your contracted agencies and what you're requesting of them, which maybe rolls into that, that second bullet about procurement. But your homeless system, of course, has a lot of obligations under federal law, as well as often under state law, and that it come with funding sources. Those are requirements for data collection, whether that be your point-in-time count, whether that be, you know, subsequent follow-up reporting on grants or so on. So, you know, the data possibilities, you know, from ones that are a local choice, like the, the format and frequency of your dashboard to a federal requirement, like your point-in-time count or your HMIS data, that all can be improved through the alignment that comes from a URA. And then obviously, planning and coordination, I think, kind of underlies all of those things. Next slide, please. So this just really reiterates, you know, I talked to a lot of people across Pierce County, from the smaller, smaller towns and rural regions to Tacoma and to the county, and just kind of validated, you know, the, the premises and assertions of, of the comprehensive plan. Not that I validated them, but they were validated by that, that spread of, of conversations. There was a little bit of nuance that was added to what, how a unified regional approach may address the current situation in Pierce County. And, and that is these, kind of these bullets about some impacts of the crisis are obscured by fragmentation, existing community capacities that can be better leveraged and aligned. It was a lot of people saying, you know, there is a lot of resource here, but that there is, there is fragmentation that can be, that the improvement, you know, improving that situation would both kind of better reveal the needs, better reveal the impacts of, of the efforts that we're already committed to and, you know, presumably improve outcomes and, and achieve a greater impact. And then also that there were opportunities for early success. And so that's very, you know, very much a, a local, you know, kind of observation was that there were examples given, for instance, in emergency weather response, you know, or descriptions of the roles of different groups when you have dangerously cold weather, dangerously hot weather, or the pandemic and that public health disaster or other kind of crises, kind of give a, present a, some options, present some examples of how folks can work together and start to immediately achieve successes through collaboration. Next slide, please. This, this part is pretty self-evident, or not self-evident, but I don't need to read these bullet points per se. The, the point that I would make here, the success factors, I think, are the same for whichever strategy you all take to implementing a unified regional approach. I do want to just point out that the word mechanisms is chosen very intentionally. That was really a response to significant interest from the community in ensuring that the agreements, that it was formal agreement that, you know, actualized commitments to equity, to integrating lived experience, as well as to increasing alignment. And so, you know, mechanisms was chosen to be the word that denotes that, you know, that the, the community was really interested in formalized agreements there. Significant capacity, we can talk about a little more, that, you know, often starts people thinking about the administrative portion or administrative cost of the budget and the functions and so on. There's some evidence from other jurisdictions as to what that amounts to and what some of the choices about those roles are. But regardless, it can't be done on a shoestring or on, you know, partial staff or shared staff. Well, shared staff perhaps, but there needs to be some dedicated capacity. That's quite evident from every experience that I looked at around Washington, around the country. And timelines, we can talk about as well. Next slide, please. This also, I think, this is, this is pretty self-evident here. But I will just say, you know, in, increasing available resources, we talked a little bit about, I think, that is, it is clear that the URAs that exist in other jurisdictions, particularly those that are more mature, that have been around for a while, are able to increase available resources, right? And so I think that that is, kind of, it's important to understand that that is, that that is an outcome that is possible. Accurately assessing and addressing gaps, I think, is just to say that the, the, the actual implementation and available resources will always be somewhat short of the kind of vision of a comprehensive continuum. And that, you know, from year to year, or planning period to planning period, the, the, the needs may, may change, may morph a bit. And the available strategies may as well. And so, you know, you want a URA that is able to, you know, really have a clear-eyed and up-to-the-minute view of what is, what is necessary, what is possible, and be, and demonstrate the ability to, to guide the system in adapting. Next slide, please. So these are, this is the, this is the meat of the report, right? And I think that this is the kind of decision that is before your councils today. These are, these are the options that we laid out for how to do it. But it's important to say that, you know, these kind of can exist on a Um, for how to do it, but it's important to say that, um, you know, these kind of can exist on a continuum more than one can happen at a, a, at one time. Um, invest in building capacity in existing structures is the first option. Um, if you look at the report, we do give some pros and cons for each one. Um, that really means those existing structures, that's your continuum of care. Those are your existing advisory bodies, those are your existing um uh collaborative structures, whether that be. Uh, committees of of elected uh elected bodies, whether that be um appointed committees, whether those be voluntary. Um, committees and and organizations in the community. Um, it's to say that there is a lot of activity, there's a lot of effort being put forward. Um, the advantage of of looking at those again, uh, looking at those structures again and um. Uh, and investing time, uh focus, attention and potentially resources in uh increasing the, the um. Uh, the extent to which they achieve some of the outcomes um that we're interested in with the U R A. The advantage, of course, is that that is efficient, it does not necessitate um, but you know, an army of lawyers to draft an M O U, much less an interlocal agreement. Um, under uh, under Washington state law. Um, it is, however, limited, particularly with regards to that first. Um, stated function or not first stated function, but that the stated uh desired role of the U R A that I mentioned at the beginning, which is that it has a role in procurement. Um, it, looking at your existing structures is not going to unify uh uh procurement. Uh, it also um. You know, those bodies have the legal authority and the delegated authority that they already have. Um, and they don't, uh, you know, looking at the existing structures only would forego the opportunity to reexamine. Uh, the scope of authority of those, those bodies individually or any new collaborative effort among them. Uh, the second would be to establish an M O U among participating jurisdictions um with a very specific time-limited objectives and commitments. Um, this, I have to say, you know, there are a lot of M O Us. Um, out there that you can find on Google or that you can request from people that talk about advancing a unified regional approach. Most of them uh that uh have really demonstrated outcomes. One of the outcomes they demonstrate is that they uh. Negotiated an eventual interlocal agreement, right? So that's to say that the M O U is often, most often. Um, a preparatory step towards establishing an interlocal agreement. Um, it doesn't have to land there, um, but uh that's, you know, almost all of the. U R As that uh operate now as interlocal agreements, there was a preceding phase uh that was an M O U. Uh, among those jurisdictions that eventually signed uh the I L A. And then the last is uh a, an interlocal agreement uh under Washington law. Uh, and talk about that in a moment. Next slide, please. Here's the advantages and challenges that I was just talking about. So um, I don't need to do a dramatic reading uh here of these uh of these. Um, and again, they're further detailed in my report. Um, but I think, uh, you know, the, the, the first option. Is expeditious and not too um resource-intensive in terms of added uh uh cost. Um, but has limited ability to advance the vision of the U R A. Uh, next slide, please. So um, I was asked in preparation for this, uh, again, we, we completed and delivered our report last December. Um, I, and then I believe we presented to the county council on it and uh in February, and so. Um, I was asked for the purposes of this presentation, just to add a few more reference uh to places where uh each of these options had been um undertaken. Um, these are a couple, both of these are under the auspice of the continuum of care. Um, and so I heard some discussion of the continuum of care, uh, that's the Tacoma, uh, Pierce and Lakewood. Um, I believe, uh, and so in, in these cases, right, you did have um focused branded. Uh, you know, written plans uh for, you know, specific capacity building initiatives within the continuum of care undertaken under supervision of an elected body. Um, Dayton, Ohio, you hear a lot about, uh, I know that I believe that some stakeholders from Pierce County uh even uh uh traveled out there. Um, or, or maybe it was that some folks from Montgomery County uh came out to to Washington, but I know there was that back and forth and and um. This uh, this, this body was uh noted in the comprehensive plan as one of the places that was looked at by that drafting. Uh, group as well. Um, most of the capacity building in uh initiatives that I saw start around data sharing. Uh, and then most of them move to uh include evaluation and or a specific uh strategy, whether that be. Uh, the implementation of coordinated entry and standardized standardized assessments, whether it be prevention programs. Um, many times those capacity building initiatives uh shouldn't surprise anybody, particularly with those examples. Uh, may be tied to the availability of a particular funding source, whether that be uh a federal grant. Uh, or whether that be a new set of uh commitments, either from uh the state uh or from the localities, um, you know. Often it's having uh money to to follow through on some plans that makes planning, um, you know, pretty focused, right? Um, so the data sharing evaluation, but then often the administration of strategies that have an associated funding source. Next slide, please. Okay, um, this is, as I said, often on a, on a um, a, a step on the way uh to an interlocal agreement. Um, I think I don't have to um, you know, speak philosophically about the advantages of a formal M O U, I think that's clear, right? Both the negotiation of it and having uh the agreement um as uh a rep, both a reference on an ongoing basis and. Um, as, you know, providing accountability and future oversight, uh, I think are natural advantages of the formality of an M O U over. Um, maybe a, a less uh formal collaboration. Um, should be said, though, that um the authority under an M O U is uh limited uh by law, there aren't. Um, uh, some of the, the um roles that I believe are reserved uh to the interlo- local agreement uh can't be achieved through the M O U. Um, and the main one is that unified administration of funding and procurement. I, I should say, you know, there are probably folks in the room who know better than I what is possible with regards to the unified um. Administration of funding, procurement, contract management and so on. Um, with regards to, you know, the M O U structure or the I L A structure, but my understanding is that. Uh, the I L A is really the, the structure that makes that um uh fully um. Uh, you know, fully uh doable um with the, the, the vision of the plan. Um, and then the other thing is to say the administrative efficiencies don't inherently get worked out in an M O U, right? An M O U may preserve um existing uh administrative uh arrangements, um, whereas the U R A might occasion um either consolidation or alignment. Next slide, please. So again, uh, you know, the two that were cited in the plan, uh, and I know that they're close by and probably reasonably familiar. Um, working county and Snohomish, they have I L As now. Um, and uh they, uh, but that was preceded uh by an M O U phase. Uh, and there are probably folks in the room who know more about that process uh than I do. Um, but uh we did give a good, uh, both were cited in the comprehensive plan and we did take a good look. Uh, at both of them and uh for being young, we see a lot of the um design features uh that are um seen as or implied as desirable. Um, in some of the goal statements of the comprehensive plan. Um. I will say Blaster County, California, down here, that's the deep Sacramento suburbs, all the way um following the eighty quarter up to to the Lake Tahoe region. They have a M O U in place that doesn't seem to um drive towards uh an I L A. Um, but does uh really focus on data sharing uh and regional planning and has a lot to do with um. The distribution of need uh within a fairly complicated geography. Um, so there are some examples where it isn't um evident that it's preparatory for, for an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, next slide, please. And then the last or the third uh here is uh to invoke. Uh, uh, the, the provision in Washington law that allows for the establishment of an interlocal agreement. Um, this one, again, um, that really uh. It, it, in our understanding meets the vision of the plan uh in that. Um, it uh can very clearly and and definitively can um assume responsibility for the administration of funding. Uh, and procurement functions, and there are lots of examples uh of that, um, both in Washington state and elsewhere. Um, it's also true that um because uh it establishes very public um. Process instead of organizing documents and so on, it provides a high level of accountability. Um, and uh it can achieve administrative efficiencies, uh, that is certainly the case. Um, we can talk a little bit about uh the relationship between uh the different boards uh that wind up being part of. Uh, a structure like this. Um, it will, I, but it is to be said that even negotiating an interlocal agreement is understood to be. A significant um uh and, and uh kind of. Uh, long-termer, it requires a significant time commitment and significant sustained attention. Um, it, yeah, and then it should also be said that last bullet requires time and investment to build capacity is just by way of saying that. You know, the really successful examples, including those that were cited in the original plan, have been around for ten, fifteen years, right? Um, and that's uh takes a significant uh amount of time to get them up to functioning at a very high level. Uh, next slide, please. So these are, these are the two um examples, maybe that are um closest by or closest at hand that I, I heard the most about and that I understood there was the most. Information about um from the stakeholder community and also uh from administrators, obviously, um, King County right up the way. And uh then Austin, Texas, I heard that that uh clearly that there had been quite a bit of back and forth, including staff visits uh to Austin. Um, I think it's important to say that there are a bunch of really important choices in the creation of an interlocal agreement. Uh, you can locate a U R A under interlocal agreement in existing um government entity, you can create a new government entity. You can locate it in a nonprofit organization. Um, and that then uh you need to specify what relationship it has to the continuum of care. Uh, and other uh existing bodies. Uh, in Austin, uh, the U R A is located in a nonprofit agency that is designated as the administrative agency. Uh, for the continuum of care, that is a high level of um, uh, I think. Uh, alignment or streamlining um of what had been a whole bunch of different um entities and bodies. Um, but like I said, it took a long time to get there. Um, so there, there are a bunch of um various, you know, um, kind of. Um, fraught, not fraught, but meaningful choices that need to be made in designing a U R A under an interlocal agreement. Um, those are largely um identified, the, the, the dynamics are identified uh in our report um on page uh twelve. Uh, which is where we discuss uh the interlocal agreement option. Uh, next line. So and back, back in February, I was also asked to identify options for phasing, um, you know, and I think I've already um. I've already described the first one uh quite a bit. Uh, the second is to say, I did find a number of examples of interlocal agreements. That largely through the mechanism of the budget commitments that were made in the start and the duration of those budget commitments. Then provided for phasing in responsibilities over time. So that's to say. You know, they agreed to a five-year budget, the first year made provision for a certain set of um roles and responsibilities, and then. You know, uh, in years two through five, they added responsibilities and added budget, and that was the mechanism, but um then the agreement upon signing. Uh, provided for a phasing function, um, you know, rather than um having an M O U be the first piece. And then moving to an interlocal agreement that's kind of um assumed to be um complete, you know, have the, the, the complete full implementation on the day that it's signed. Um, last slide, I, I think that's it. I'm happy to take questions. There's an awful lot of knowledge in the room. Um, so I'd also um hope that uh Director Moss or anybody else uh who um. Uh, you know, uh, is uh, you know, feels, feels free to jump in and respond to questions as well. I know that Director Moss has a number of additional slides as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go, go right ahead, Chair Mello.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you to our partners at Social Change Partners for uh your presentation. Thank you for your good work to help us scan the environment, not only to understand what's happening here in Tacoma and Pierce County and the opportunities to. Uh, organize ourselves differently um and seek the kind of coordination and outcomes that our community is desiring, but also helping us learn. Some uh from some other places around the country who are struggling with uh some of th- these very same challenges. I, I wanted to be clear that, um, you know, Social Change Partners was selected to do this report. Um, and help us uh learn from around the country. Uh, it throughout the report that was mentioned, we can make sure that the, our Tacoma City Council peers has a link to the full report, it's a very good report. Um, with a lot of good information uh to chew on, uh, pros and cons of the different options that were presented. I want to be clear, there was no, and Director Moss can certainly correct me, th- there was no one recommendation. Um, other than the big opportunity to work better together and figure out what a unified regional. Approach looks like for us, and i- it means more than the county, uh, and we certainly want to start this conversation with. Um, our biggest partner, the city of Tacoma, our biggest partner by population and other metrics, um, beginning this. Very important conversation about collaboration with Tacoma just makes a tremendous amount of sense. I want to make clear there's not been an option that's been selected. We are at the very early stages of what should this look like, and that is why Mayor Woodard and I. Um, designed these discussion questions for these bodies, for, for both of these bodies to, to focus on, okay, he, here's. Here's what some of the literature says, here's what some of the experiences around the country are. Um, what do we think is right for our community to move forward in a direction that u- utilizes our limited resources? Uh, perhaps better um and makes better outcomes. So with that, Mayor, I just wanted to start that introduction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Mel- Mello, and I'll just add, um, as we're thinking about this, and you all just received kind of a, a, a slide with some. Questions on it that we want to kind of propose for this conversation. I, I think this, this conversation very much remember reminds me of a conversation we had shortly after I got elected around affordable housing. And um, and, and we created SHAPE, which is the South Town Housing Affordability Partnership, which is an M O U. Um, kind of organization, M O Us were signed by every city that wanted to participate. Every city in, in town in Pierce County doesn't have to participate, um, but for those who want to. Um, and so I see this like, like, I see that, I see this in that same way, but maybe even better because unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of resources. From every city in town around affordable housing, um, because it takes so much to build it, but we do all invest something. In homelessness in our community, so um, I, I think this lines up very well with what we've already, um, what we've already started and how we're already used. To working. I'm anxious to hear from um both my council, both the Pierce County and City of Tacoma council members. On their thoughts of what this could look like. Um, if, if you think a regional approach is, is the right idea, and if not, why? Um, if you think a regional approach is, is um a good idea, um, then, then tell me what you, what potentially, or tell us. Or share with one another, I should say, what out of these options, what potentially is appealing to you as an elected official? Um, and, and what things you think need to be in a regional approach, right? Um, maybe we don't start with everything, maybe we start with a few things, but what, what I'd like, what I'd like to take out of the conversation. Um, this afternoon is, is um, let's not worry about what we currently do, let's dream. And say that in an ideal state, if we could achieve something, it would look like this. So let's not think about what we do versus what the county does, or um how we do it versus how the county does it, or how the city does it. Let, let's think about it from, for, this is our opportunity, really think about doing something really different. And so let's, let's not limit ourselves um by the thoughts of losing control of something. Let's, let's think about how much better we could serve those who need it the most, and let's put that thought in our mind as we think about. Is some kind of regional approach, something that we'd like to see in Pierce County and how that could work? So feel free to start raising your hands. All right, thank you. Oh, yes, Councilmember Hitchens, Beach, uh, Councilmember Bushnell, keep yours on, you'll be next.
Sorry, Joe. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, so yes, I am very, very interested in a unified regional approach. Um, I think when we dream big and think about how we want to get in front of this. one of the things that we are not doing well is when somebody enters homelessness, the response is different depending on where they enter homelessness. And so my dream is that no matter how you enter homelessness, no matter the situation, no matter what time of day or what day of the week, the response is the same. That we have someplace for you to go that is safe, that is welcoming. It doesn't matter your situation, whether you are fleeing domestic violence, whether you have three kids, you are suffering from P T S D, you have a substance use disorder, or you have three dogs. Somewhere in Pierce County, we have a response for you that allows you to be safe for the time period so that we can get you stable and figure out what the next steps are. And right now, that absolutely does not happen to the, to the best abilities of our service providers that are splintered all over and doing the absolute best work they can. But it depends on which number you call and who answers the phone, and that's not okay. And I think a unified regional approach will get us there. If we have a system that brings us together so that every single school district, fire district, E M T, church and nonprofit has a way to enter the system and get help for that individual. So we're not constantly going down this list because even our service providers start at the top of the list and they go to their, their number ones and number twos, and then they go, okay, I'm number three, number four, number five. And we waste a lot of time and it's traumatizing for those that are seeking help. And it also creates hurt and harm to those people, like they, they give up. And they go, well, I'll just go back to my car, which isn't safe in what we are trying to get in front of. So yes, I'm fully on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Sorry, let me call people by their last names, Councilmember Bushnell. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you. I couldn't have said it better myself, Councilmember Hitchens. We are living in some of the most dire times for our homeless population. And we need to take the time to demonstrate the need from the county and the city level to meet those great times, meet the great challenge that we're ahead of us. And I think an I L A is where we need to be as an entity through a comprehensive plan. And I also believe that it's important for us to maybe do a phased in approach to get to that point. It's one of the challenges that was mentioned was political will and attention. And I don't see anybody on this dais that does not have the political will or the attention that we clearly need and for the long term to get this done. This is something that we as a civilization, as, as a humanity, have been trying to grapple with since the dawn of civilization. And we are, so we are taking on some of the hardest challenges that anybody can face. And so we need to have great, great systems in place in order to meet this challenge. And I think having a unified approach regionally, systemically, all together is going to be that solution. And I think we'll come up with a great solution for our region. What that solution looks like, I think we can figure out here. But I'll just start off by saying that I think we have existing agencies. Maybe we do an inventory of capacity and capability of the existing agencies we have here locally that might be able to take on the work. But if that inventory kind of shows that maybe it's a little bit too much out of their scope, we do look at potentially starting a new agency within our county in order to meet this great challenge. And so I think looking at our, what existing agencies we have and see if it might fit within those jurisdictions. Maybe it's an additional department within a specific agency that we have here. But if not, we consider doing, moving towards an interlocal agreement with all jurisdictions within our county and trying to make sure that people are able to stay in their homes from where they're from. You know, one of the, one of the parts of this, and I, I really keep, but when I think about the values of this system, we want to make sure that people have those support systems in place. And those support systems are not always formal. Sometimes those support systems are friends. Sometimes those support systems are family that are able to help people. And when we centralize systems, when we centralize systems of services outside of their home, that rips them away from the informal systems that could support them the most. And so it was really important for us to try and keep people in their communities so that they understand the streets, they know where the store is at, they know where their mother is living. If we take them away in order to try, try to provide them all these different services when all they might have really needed was a friend to, to help them out. And so I think that's really important for us to remember that when folks enter the system, they might get pulled away from the places that they know the most, the places they call home. And we need to make sure that they are able to be supported within their own communities if possible. I know that there's some larger issues with substance use, mental health. We might need some facilities or additional specific help that they might not be able to get in their specific community. But if we can't house them to have them be in their own homes and their own community, I think is the most effective way. So that's just one part of the values, one of the questions that are here that I wanted to bring up. And so I'll just stop there. I think, I think we can rise to the challenge here and I'm really excited for the next few steps.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Bushnell. Councilmember Ashka.
Thank you, Mayor Woodard. I'm going to go ahead and kind of second both Councilmember Hitchens and Councilmember Bushnell. You asked us to speak to this, though, as an elected. And I'm going to speak to it both as an elected and as a constituent. Anytime that we can row in the same direction as government and create efficiencies that mean that we're either providing more services or saving money to solve a problem before us, we're doing the right thing. I've never talked to any, anybody, any constituent that says, gosh, I sure wish you would pay double the money for the same service. It doesn't make sense. So I, I am speaking in support of a unified regional approach and probably an I L A. And I get that it takes, and I want to speak to this for a minute, that it takes a greater investment upfront, but it's a greater investment to lesser than need. It's a greater investment to lesser than need. We are not just in a homelessness crisis, we're a housing crisis. And so when we start this, if, if we should start an A L A like this and that would give us greater sustainability than an M O U or anything else, that would give us sustainability and that people could reach out and know that they would have a place to go if they needed it, regardless of who's sitting at these diresses, regardless of what happens in the turn of an election. That's a lot of, lot of trust to do. But then, then in addition to that, we've already started our SHAPE work, as you talked about. And there's other areas like the opioid crisis where, again, our borders make no difference. Somebody experiencing homelessness, somebody who's at, at risk of losing their house, somebody who has a drug problem, they don't first say, gosh, what, what are the boundaries of my municipal entity? They reach out for help. And right now, we have silly back and forth challenges with simply people going to Parkland instead of Tacoma or Tacoma instead of Piala. And this would help, I mean, the amount of efficiency to be actually able to serve people and solve the problem is potentially much greater than it's being outlined here because I think that we probably have a tremendous duplicity of services. It, I wouldn't be me if I didn't also say as a Tacoma constituent that I want to see geographic equity as well as equity throughout this. We share all of those values already. So I, I'm really excited by this presentation and for the opportunity that we have as the elected sitting here at these diresses today to make substantive change for the future. So the people, the next people sitting on this dais aren't sitting here with the same crisis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashka. Deputy Mayor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will second all the three of you that have already spoken. Wildly supportive of putting something in place here. And it feels like something that can't come fast enough that we should have done before. So let's make it happen. And I think that just to build off of the folks that have already spoken, I do think that putting in the time upfront is very, very worthwhile. I'm also wondering if there's even a first step that we as the city council could do since it was the county council's work in just putting together a letter of support in general before we get to a formal M O U and potentially a further I R A, I would be really supportive of that. And then also thinking about the short term pieces that we could put in place based on our director's presentation. I know we've mentioned this many times, but I don't want us to, and I don't think anyone's suggesting this, but I don't want to wait for the U R A to be in place to really get to work together. So are there pieces, and I, you know, all my light bulbs went off on slide six where you said improving, improvements to procurement and contract monitoring. We know that we've heard from our service providers how challenging procurement and R F Ps and everything that we do as agencies, not just the city or just the county or any other jurisdiction, but we know that there are challenges there. How can we streamline that? Can we get to work on that before we put this more formal piece in place? So I think there's maybe some great upfront work. Yes, we should all dig in and, and make this U R A happen for the long term success and vision of this. And then the other point I wanted to make, and thank you, Councilmember Bushnell, for kind of talking about the different needs of the community. I'm thinking about how we build in flexibility to this. And having formality is really, really important, having something that's sustainable and is going to be in place. I love what you said, Councilmember Hitchens, about, you know, everybody who picks up a phone should have the same message. We should be able to find some for everyone, and yet everyone's different. So what sort of flexibility can we build in, in our different jurisdictions? So really excited to continue the conversation in that space. So I think I will steal from you, Mayor, and say we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So let's, let's do the, the short term and the long term immediately. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Walker. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. When I echo, well, really what's been said so far, I think we've all heard it, we've all used it. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. And so I would love to see us working together to see how far we can go. But I don't want to read that as don't go fast. I want to move with urgency through this. I want to move comprehensively. I love the idea of starting and setting up an I L A. I'm terrified at the idea of setting up an I L A because it seems to take us three years to do it. So how can we do it differently this time? Because frankly, we've taken too long to get to this point. And we can't take this much longer to get to the next step. I think back at a time when most of us don't want to think back to March twenty twenty, when the whole world turned upside down. However, we found a way as a society to move and get things done that were impossible before. The Zoom meetings we're having right now would not be here today if we hadn't just said, you know what? We got to do this and we got to do it now. How do we bring that urgency to what we were, to what we're doing when it comes to homelessness? Sunday night, I wasn't able to attend. I think some of us up here did the memorial for those who are homeless among us who passed away. It is dangerous out there on our streets. A lot of people die for lots of reasons on our streets. Let us not, by not moving quick enough, be the reason that there are more fully support. And I hope we can find the quickest path to get as comprehensively done as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's real important to work together, you know. As a person who's intimately been in these camps over my law enforcement career for over twenty years and how we used to handle homelessness to now, a lot of stuff has changed, just like Councilmember Campbell. There's some urgency here. The human side of all this is, is people are, are suffering really bad. You know, when we work in silos, Tacoma, I've seen this, when Tacoma would make a policy, maybe move a camp, then a micro community would be affected. The tribe would be affected because it would be moved over here. The left hand isn't talking to the right hand. You talked about part of the what's at stake here is the community confidence. And, and I think the community isn't confident of what we are doing individually or collectively. And I think this is the time to, to take a look at this and to see and bridge those possible gaps that might be, you know, six, success factors. So I'm willing to take a look at this, to work together, to be a force multiplier, to, you know, find some new ideas. What, what does Tacoma do good that can help Pierce County do something better? What can Pierce County do to, to help Tacoma? Chair Mello talked about, I don't know how many percentage of people that are homeless in Tacoma come from outside of Tacoma. That is a true statement. And, you know, this is a regional thing. So I'm, I'm willing to take a look at this. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm not used to sitting this far out on the edge here. No, I think you told us to dream big and not get into the nitty gritty details, so I'm going to do my best to do that here, even though that's very against my character. No, I think the idea would be that no matter, to go with Councilmember Hitchens said, that no matter who you are, no matter where you are, you're connected to the right resource at the right time to get you the right place in your life, right? Like, that's the goal. No matter who you are and where you are, you're connected to the services to get you off our streets and help you move on with your lives. When I think about the idea of an I L A or an M O U, I have a couple of questions that I just would have put out here for some of my colleagues on the council and then also for the county council members, right? I think we're really in need of a lot of trust building among the county, the city and all the little municipalities here in our community. I don't know if we quite are at the stage. I mean, not among us. I think we're doing great here, but this is the first time the county council, city council ever met as a collective group in anyone's recent memory. I also know many other little cities in our county that have a very different view about homelessness than maybe we do here in the city of Tacoma. And that there needs to be some trust about when we work together, are we going to make sure that everybody's taking on their piece of the burden? And is everybody getting their piece in return? So I think there's a lot of trust building needs to go on in the future for this conversation that I, I hope we can continue to engage on and want to see as part of this process. And that makes me think that we could kind of scale up the conversation. How about we start with M O Us where we have clear goals and commitments that we try to achieve? And then we achieve them. And then we build trust. And then we move forward and we keep going and we keep building trust among the people that are here in the county and the people out in the community that we can actually handle this issue and, and really tackle it. I think that's something that I'm thinking a lot about. I think about I L A as like a marriage, and I don't know if you would say like, hey, let's get married and then figure out how this relationship is going to work, right? You would have a grounded relationship first and then you move into kind of a legal arrangement for kind of moving forward. So those are things I'm thinking about. I think they need to be borders and guardrails. The example that was put up on the screen is the King County Regional Homeless Authority. I probably follow that organization a lot closer than I should since I live in the city of Tacoma. But I know that that has not been a, a organization that has functioned without challenges over the last couple of years. So I would want us to really, if we were going to think about I L As, what lessons can we learn from looking at King County and really understanding their successes, their setbacks as we think about working together in the future? I think that one's really clear. I think the county and the city of Seattle work relatively well together, but I think when it starts coming to pulling again the other municipalities and cities, it's become a struggle. I also think just as we think through this, alignment is one thing, but it's another layer of bureaucracy, what we really need right now. If by working together, are we going to be eliminating bureaucracy? Are we going to be more efficient? Are we going to be more aligned? Or are we just going to create another box that needs to be checked to get services in the hands of people that need it the most? So I would want us to really think about if we've entered in an interlocal agreement, is this going to be another layer of bureaucracy? Or is this going to actually really align our efforts and really help us make sure we're getting people what they need? My other questions are all around this, are just like, who's going to pay the cost? Where's the money going to come from? If, if we as the city of Tacoma are paying a huge share, does that mean that we get to have more responsibility over where the funding is going? Or not? See, I'm getting the details, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Did you, did you hear me down here?
Yeah, I know. The last question I'll have, and this will be like a high, I'll keep it high level for my last question here about this. Because again, I, I agree with my colleagues that we need to take this on at a regional level because we have regional needs here. But I think one of the broader questions is how are we going to bring people together to address homelessness, whether it's visible, visible or not in their community? So we in the city of Tacoma deal with homelessness every day because it's clearly visible in our community. But there's other communities that don't see homelessness every day. And the reason they don't is because it's here in Tacoma. And so when we start saying like, hey, we need to come together and address this as a collective body to weigh in on homelessness, are we, if we don't do the trust building ahead of time, going to have partners that say, well, we don't see homelessness in our part of the city, the county, our area? So I don't know why we should be contributing to this. You know, isn't this more of a plate, like a, you know, an incorporated Pierce County or Tacoma issue? And again, I think that's something I'm really thinking about. So I'm fully on the idea of we need to work better together to deliver. So I'm fully on the idea of, we need to work better together to deliver the services people need, but just have lots of questions about how we get there. Thank you.
Fair enough, Councilmember Heinz. And I would add, obviously, that the devil's in the details, right? Because it's, we can, we can say, yes, let's do this, and then you get below that, and there are just so many other issues, and we know that that exists. But I think, to coin a phrase from our county executive, it's a coalition of the willing, right? We start off focusing on the most important thing, and that's those who are homeless in our community. And, and we take, and we focus on that, and then try to figure out how we best serve them. And, and again, there are a lot of details that have to be worked out, but, but I do think it's possible. Let me move on. I've got Councilmember Rumbaw, and then hopefully, we will hear from some more of the county council members as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure I have much more to offer, but I'm glad to follow Councilmember Heinz because I was going to bring up King County's plan, and I'm glad he brought it up because it does weigh on me, what they're doing in King County, and we really should look at other examples and figure out what they're doing and what we could do better. But I think my first thing is, if we want to do this, we, first thing we have to do is just be transparent in sharing our information together. And so I'll start off with what I mentioned before. When we give reports on what we're doing, it would be great if that, those reports included both Tacoma and the county on our reports, just so I had a better picture, or we had a better picture, or the community had a better picture of what, what the dollars look like and what we're doing. But I definitely think that we can do this. We have done a lot of things together. The mayor mentioned what we're doing on affordable housing. I think that's great with the, with SHAPE, which is fabulous. We have the Crystal Judson Family Justice Center is another example of something that we do together with domestic violence. And what weighs on me heavy is the family, the woman who drives around in the minivan with her domestic violence, with her, with her abuser in the car behind her chasing after her. One of our detectives is on the phone with her, and she has no place to go. There's no bed for her and her family. And that's the person, we need to, like, help that person at that point. And so I'm hoping that when we talk about helping people who are homeless, we're looking at everybody, that we're helping that woman, that's the senior citizen, they just raised her rent, she's going to get evicted, how are we keeping her and her housing? So I think that's why it's so important as a county, and as a city of Tacoma, and all of these other municipalities that we work together to help everybody, because this is happening all over our county. So I think that it's, it is what Councilmember Campbell says, like, something we, it's urgent that we do it now. And we have, like, we have so many opportunities for things to have happen. We have low barriers, just different types of homeless choices, and different places for people to enter the system. We just don't have enough of what we need in our community. And I think we, we have resources. It would be great if we could figure out a funding mechanism for this, because obviously, it's very expensive to do what we're doing right now. And I'm hoping that, to working together, we'll come up with some good solutions. And we should be looking at what other people are doing so that we don't make the same mistakes. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There have been some wonderful things shared that I agree on, so I don't want to repeat any of those, and so I don't have a whole lot more to add, except that drawing from some of the things that have been shared, I think it's really important, obviously, that we work together. I think we're all in agreement on that with a regional approach. I think it's really important that we identify some real measurable places where we can have some success. Councilmember Heinz mentioned building support or building trust. I agree, we need to build trust amongst our constituents and the residents. I think we need to build momentum, and I think we need to build confidence, even amongst ourselves, that, that we can do this. The problem is so huge and overwhelming and discouraging at times, and it's been going on for a while. This is not, this is not anything new, that I think if we can work together, and I kind of alluded to some of this a little bit earlier with the two directors, if we can work together to identify some things that we can really, really take action on, really move the needle on, show some accomplishments, and then build upon that and keep growing and growing in our activities, so that we can not only show the community, but show ourselves, as we learn to work together, what can be accomplished. Because, you know, this is our responsibility. This is a huge responsibility, but this is our responsibility as the county council, as the city council in Tacoma, as well as the other jurisdictions in our county, and they need to be a part of the conversation as well. And I thought Councilmember Heinz made a really great point of making sure that they're included and, and making sure that they understand some of the statistics that Chair Mello mentioned and Councilmember Herrera alluded to as well. We're all part of, these are all of our people in all of our communities. There are residents, there are brothers and sisters and kids and parents. So we do need to be part of the solution. And if we can work with our wonderful professional staff to identify some areas that we can really, really dial in on and say, we are going to show movement in these five areas, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, and then we're going to move on and, and attack the bigger problems. And you know what? It's not always going to be successful, right? I'm not a huge planner, and I'm not a huge studier, and I understand why it's important, but we need people of all types, and I am all about action. So let's jump in and try some things. Obviously, this problem is so, it's throughout the entire country, right? No one has figured it out. I wish somebody had, because we would just do what they were doing. They haven't figured it out, so we may need to try some new things. Maybe some things that didn't work in Austin or in New York would work here. We can, we can try that, too. It's not going to be 100% successful, but, but I think we will identify some successes, and we will build on those, and we will let go of the things that didn't work so well. But being flexible, being determined, that sense of urgency that Councilmember Campbell talks about, I am all about that. Let's just, let's give some things a go and, and support each other. I'll end with that. It's really important that we, we support each other's efforts and build each other up, because I know we all want the same things. Here as, as representatives, we want to take care of our people. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Morale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to engage with such a great group of elected officials. But as we look around the room, we're all represent different areas. I represent suburban and rural. As Councilmember Heinz said, a lot of my towns, the people in these, in this room is not much bigger than some of those towns. They will not agree that their homeless situation is the same as an urban area, Tacoma. So we have to, if we move forward with that, and I agree, there needs to be a unified approach, that we need to have successes. Councilmember Heinz has got a tiny village in his neighborhood. Believe it or not, my district has the only tiny home village in unincorporated Pierce County. The only one, and it's the Ordings Veterans Village. We are attempting to put tiny home villages in Pierce County, and we are getting pushback in unincorporated area. So we have to methodically walk through and show that we can be successful on multiple levels, just because of the diversities that we have out there. Tacoma, I understand, I grew up in Tacoma. I grew up in Tacoma when there were four or five low-income hotels in Tacoma, the Carlson, Colonial, that had a lot of the affordable homes in Tacoma. Tacoma has been somewhat challenged because of the gentrification that's taken place and the success that Tacoma has. Those hotels aren't available. They've been bought up, market rate, condos have been built. But that is everywhere in this country, where housing has just gone through the roof. How do we approach it? We are talking about the homeless community. I agree with Councilmember Hitchens. If there is a domestic violence, if there is a family, there needs to be resources, and they don't need to get lost in a phone tree somewhere. They need to have answers. She brings up a good point, Councilmember Hitchens, that it needs to be faith-based, it needs to be the fire districts, it needs to be the school districts. We all need to be on the same page. So moving forward, I'm in agreement that we do need to move forward, but understand that as we, in the county, are elected from different areas that have different homeless needs. I have homeless people in the Ordin Valley that have lived homeless for 20 years. They're self-sufficient. They only come into town when they need something. But other than that, they're more than content to live on the rivers. And for us to say that's wrong, I don't think it is, but some of them eventually come to a point where they do have to find permanent housing. And fortunately, for me, we have the Veterans Village, but there again, that's for veterans only. So as we move forward, I want to build on successes like Tacoma has, built successes with their tiny home village, the transitional housing. I just went on a tour of Olympia's tiny home villages, and the monumental shift that they have had to overcome with the homeless population down there has, has, one, been encouraging, but also the scale of what they had to deal with is, is just huge. But there again, as Heather Moss knows, I am constantly harping about driving services out to the unincorporated areas so they don't have to come into Tacoma to get those services. So the more we can tear down the silos of the nonprofits to push them out into unincorporated Pierce County to represent the population out there, I think is very, very crucial, that we also make sure that the nonprofit, I mean, there's only so much money out there, and to, to work amongst themselves and not know that there's turf wars going on within the nonprofit community, but there's enough for everyone, and, you know, as far as governance goes, there's always challenges. I came from an environment of fire districts, merging fire districts together. Talk about challenging, but in the end, everyone kind of understanding their role, giving up their control, we ended up becoming central Pierce Fire and Rescue out of six or seven rural fire districts. And, but that took years, took three years to do that, to finally take it to a vote of, of the people. But with that, I'm encouraged from the start. This is the first time I've been here, and I appreciate the hospitality, and I appreciate the enthusiasm in this room. But there again, we got to tap that down a little bit, and I, I am one not to rush into things. So I know there's an urgency, but unintended consequences come out of urgencies a lot of time, and we need to be aware of those. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Kruger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I certainly appreciate the time that we have here together that we can all brainstorm on this, this issue, which affects all of us. And I'm inclined to be more like Councilwoman Morale in being a little hesitant, but we know there was a sense of urgency. And I can appreciate Councilmember Hitchens in looking at having what I would call a McDonaldized approach, where it's the same. So whenever you go in, you know where to go, you know what you can get, and that's always very helpful, having that. And I appreciate the concerns with where will the money come from, because that's a big part. I'm also knowing that we have to have the political will, we have to be intentional with what we do. And with Councilmember Ouska, yes, growing in the same direction is always very helpful, and that's what I would look forward to, having, you know, the same ideas. What I'm, what I'm not hearing or seeing in plans are getting at the roots of the problem and what is the cause of homelessness. We know that there is an event that has happened, but there's a lot of breakdown in the family. Where are the complementary services to help with the families, and so that they don't experience the homelessness situations? The, it's like, no matter what we do, we will never catch up with all of the homeless issues. When I look at other states across the country, other cities and other, around the country, it just gets worse and worse. And, you know, it's like, why is that happening? I'm not seeing an approach to that. And as far as the districts, I'm very reluctant or hesitant to diminish the authority of my district. In a, in a regional-type authority, it's mixed. And I think of Puget Sound Regional Council, I think of the Health Department, I think of the Clean Air Agency, where we lose, my district loses its, its voice. So that is a concern that, you know, that I look at in this. But knowing that, you know, the brainstorming together to finding the good things that work, that is something I can look forward to, and, and the relationships that can be built through that. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember, for your comments. I think, Councilmember, I was like, I'm looking around going, is there anybody left? Councilmember Diaz, bring us on.
Thank you. Sorry, my, my little mic doesn't quite work out here. Um, out here on the other side. I appreciate everyone's comments. I also wanted to add, I think I'm sort of complementary to Councilmember Morale. I actually grew up out in the county, in Spanaway, so we're sort of symbiotic in that way. So I think about this both from my lens here at the city and from my experience having grown up not in the city, and how hard it was to not have so many of the services that really only existed within the city. Some of the biggest one that comes to mind for me, which sort of gets to something that I'm looking for in this, in this work, is youth who are LGBTQ out where I live didn't have access to things like the Oasis Center or different services that were in the city because we were literally a Spanaway, in Spanaway. And transit wasn't quite what it is today, and that still leaves something to be desired even today. So for me, what I'm thinking about is very similar to what Councilmember Denson talked about in terms of, what can we identify? What problems will we actually be able to solve with a regional approach versus what problems do the different counties, jurisdictions, cities need to be working on in their own fields? I think I am more interested in sort of narrowing that down and identifying what will be helped regionally, what is sort of reachable in scale, and to Councilmember Hitchens' point of trying to make it so that everyone has a similar user experience, what can we bring from the city of Tacoma out, and what models work in the county that we might be able to bring in? I don't presume to think that everything that we have in the city is going to not only not work out there, but it may not also be best practice in other places. So trying to think through some of those things is where I'm at. I also think narrowing in on which identifiable problems we want to solve regionally would really help us identify which funding we already had from the presentations, that the city of Tacoma is using some of our funding differently than the county. So I think I want to make sure that we get those funding streams aligned, not to get too into the details, but I think that, that will help us identify which problems we can solve and which pots of money we need, and how we can grow those distinctly with what the problem is and how the scale goes. And the other thing that I feel like I didn't quite hear today, I did hear a little bit about equity, but that is one of my concerns, is thinking explicitly about who the homeless population is. It is more often people of color, it is more often LGBT folks, so I'm wondering if there's a way that we can work in folks with lived experience and folks with these marginalized representations into these conversations and into these ideas, particularly around just what we, as a city, have already identified that we know we need. For example, we already know we need RV camping. Maybe that's something the county can help us find sites, find providers for, and vice versa. Maybe there's things out in the county that they can help us find within our city that would, that we can figure out a way to get folks into the city to do those services. So I just, I think about, those are loosely my thoughts. I think, I feel like I have more questions than I do distinct next steps. But for me, I think it is about zeroing in and sort of deciding and, and thinking through what our value sets are and what we're, what we're trying to prioritize for ourselves, and then what we can all agree are similar priorities. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. All right. Everybody has had a bite at the apple. Everybody has had a bite at the apple. I, I guess, I, I, Chair Mello, do you want to go first? Do you want me to go first to finish this out? You're going first.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I really appreciate the dialogue together and this start of great conversation to align values and tease out where all of our hopes and dreams and potential fears are. You know, I, I can't help but just reflect, just, just briefly, I think Councilmember Heinz, thank you for bringing voice to the need to build trust and figure out how to build trust together. For too long, the city of Tacoma has felt like they've been rowing alone and bearing the brunt of the service delivery and the funding in this area. We've, we've, we, we hear that. The county has, has truly been, as of late, I think, really trying to do significantly more here and you heard a lot from Director Moss about how that has changed in recent times and, and more to come, right? For, for a long time, the city of Tacoma was the only jurisdiction in Tacoma or in Pierce County to have a mental health and substance use disorder dedicated funding stream. Two years ago, finally, after a very long time of trying, Pierce County came through with that countywide funding stream to join Tacoma in resourcing mental health and substance use disorder. And earlier this year, we approved the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act dollars for affordable housing and related services so that Tacoma wasn't the only one rowing in this direction. So I, we, we've, we, we know why there's reticence and lack of trust and totally hear the need to build trust. I hope that those actions by the Pierce County Council to put in place the mental health and substance use disorder dedicated revenue, the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act dedicated revenue, our work to do safe parking, we've stood up four safe parking sites in unincorporated Pierce County over the last couple of years, our partnership with Aspen Court, many, many other examples. I, I hope some of these examples is demonstration that the county is a real, serious partner in this work. The department's leadership to, to build a very coherent comprehensive plan to end homelessness, have an active implementation advisory board with many seats at the table with people with lived experience, centering racial equity and making sure it's really culturally competent. I, I really hope that those are demonstrations by Pierce County about how serious we're taking this and, and how, how far we still need to go. So, Mayor, I, I think you're gonna, as you always do, help suggest a path forward. I, I, I'll, I'll just end my comments in addition to the appreciation for your, you and your team and your years of, of really working on this. This is not a new issue for the city of Tacoma. You've been working on it incredibly seriously for some time and please know that the Pierce County Council is just as serious as you are in, in meeting the challenge and the opportunities to work better together. We at the Pierce County Council have put in place a select committee on homelessness. We have three members of our council who have rose their hand to volunteer to really help lead that work on, on our end. It's chaired by the Vice Chair of our council, Marty Campbell, and also Councilmembers Denson and Herrera have agreed to serve on that select committee on homelessness. It started its work this summer. Their main charge is to help the county really think about the, the implementation of our comprehensive plan to end homelessness and this very notion of what does it mean to do this more regionally. While those three members have rose their hand to serve on our select committee on homelessness, please know that every single member of the Pierce County Council is very dedicated to, to putting our oar in the water and, and, and really working on this issue, even those of us that don't serve on that select committee. So we would love to figure out with you, Mayor, if there is continued interest in maybe a small group of your legislative body, a small group of our body, of course, with our professional staff, to think about how we take this conversation to the next level, how we then building relationships with other, especially major, other major jurisdictions. You probably can't start with everybody because it's a, it's a big county, but how, how do we start with those maybe most affected, with, with the most to, to put into the effort and, and go from there? So again, Mayor, thank you for your leadership and your willingness to have this, this joint session really focused on this big challenge and please, please count on the Pierce County Council and Pierce County being a, a major partner.
Thank you, Chair Mello. When I talked about this being a monumental moment when we first started, the fact that we're all sitting here together, just this conversation alone, being able to be open and honest with one another in a respectful way has shown so much growth in our county and city, in our county and city relationships. I'm just going to put it out there and be really honest about it. And that's, that's so important, but that's where we've come from, which means that we have, if we can get here, we can get even so much further than this. As I think about the conversation and what this could mean, it was mentioned already that we already, we do this work in so many ways, whether that is through the Health Department or Crystal Justin, Family Justice Center or SHAPE. We know what this looks like and we know how it can work. And maybe initially, as I talk about the Coalition of the Willing, maybe initially it's just inviting everybody and people get to choose whether or not they want to participate. There's no way we can make someone participate, make a jurisdiction as, as Chair Mello and I were chatting, we can't make someone participate, but we start with those who want to participate, who want to work on this together. And, and thank you, Councilmember Morrell. It is going to look different. It's going to look different in every district. It's probably going to look different in every community, but I want to remind us it should look different. Everybody's not going to do it the same. That's good because everyone who is homeless is not the same. And if we're going to meet people where they are, then we have to provide a myriad of services that meet the needs of that particular family or individual. What a mother with children needs is way different than what a single person with a dog might need. And, and, but our system has to be built in such a way that we can, we can handle all of those requests and we can serve all of those members of our community. I think the, the reason I talked about the Health Department and Crystal Justin is because if we look at who is homeless in our community, people aren't just homeless because they have an affordability crisis. There are many people in our, in our community who are suffering from mental health issues. There are many people in our homeless community who are, who are suffering from drug addiction. And so we've got to have a system that encompasses the entire human being and we can't just only focus on whether or not we can get them off the street and into a, into a shelter or into a house because if we can't address the other needs, then we're not making any long, long-term systemic change in someone's life. And I think that's what brings us here to this moment. The city of Tacoma has been city manager, I don't remember the year, but city manager, could you please remind me of the year that we entered into an emergent, we, we said we were in an emergency crisis around homelessness?
Yes, because it was right after I was appointed, May 7, 2017.
2017, the city of Tacoma, six years. We've declared this an emergency in our city and we still haven't solved it. And let me be super clear, it is not for lack of trying because I know on both, both teams, as I look out at these two lady leaders in front of us who are leading our various departments, who have teams of people behind them, who are going out every single day or answering that phone every single day and trying to serve. It is not for lack of trying and it is not for lack of the amazing staff that we have. It's a resource issue and I can't remember who said this earlier, nobody's figured out how to solve this issue. If someone had, everybody would be copying them, but no one has. And so we gotta be okay to leap out there and make mistakes, Robin. We gotta, we gotta be okay with making mistakes. As governments, that's hard for us because we believe that we have to have it all figured out before we put something forward. But sometimes in order to, to, to move towards something, we have to be willing to take risks. Now, I'm not saying that we risk, we risk all of our money or risk the lives of those, the people that we're trying to serve, but we should at least be able to try things to say if they work. I am fully in support of this regional approach because I am by nature and just who I am made to be to be a collaborator. I don't believe any one of us sitting in this room can solve it all by ourselves, even if we had the right answer. So collectively, unless somewhere in the county you guys got that money printing machine too, that just doesn't seem to work when you need it to, there's a lack of resources. But, but I truly believe that if we can all come together and again, focus on that mother, focus on that individual. If, if we can focus, focus on those families, if we can put, keep them in mind every step of the way, we can get out of our silos and get out of our own way. And so, Councilmember Mello, I absolutely agree with you. Maybe the next step is to pull together a small group of, of council members, or members of the council, pull together a small group, you've got some already, maybe add some to that to begin this conversation. I love the idea of maybe starting with a few goals and, because I think we do need to build community trust. No doubt in my mind, we need to build community trust. And we need to work with those who are already doing this work, like the Tacoma-Pierce County Coalition to end house, to end homelessness, whose members are sitting right here in, in the audience today. But, but, but I think we've got to bring everyone to the table and be able to, to, you know, point to some very small strategic goals, get those and then be, be able to build. Having been in this crisis for seven years, or six years and calling it an emergency, obviously we know it takes time. It does take time and that's almost the one thing we don't have. But I think that if we focus, that we can manage going slow enough to make sure everybody's included, but going fast enough that we can see some action quickly. And so, those are my thoughts. Chair Mello, I alone won't appoint people to the committee, but we'll have a conversation with my council. We'll get back, back to you with a couple of names of people that we'd like to see. I'm looking at my council, nobody's shaking their head no. So I'm going to just believe that this is going to be okay and if not, they'll tell me later. But, so I say to my council, if you're interested in being the council member who joins the county's group to begin to figure out how these conversations, how this, excuse me, just how this can move forward, please let me know. But I'd be more than delighted to, to assign a couple council members or three council members to work alongside the group that you, the select committee that you've appointed to continue to, to begin to have these conversations, create some kind of checklist and kind of decide how we want to go down this path. I've heard from all of my council members today that this is something they want to participate in, so I have no doubt that we want to be at the table. I think now, as I said earlier, the devil is in the details and, and how we get there. So again, just really honored for this conversation this afternoon and just honored to have all of you here. Look forward to continuing this work and I guarantee you, it will, we will not see each other again sometime in the distant, in the distant future. We're going to see each other soon. So with that, if there are no more questions or comments from anyone else, city manager, chief of staff, anything from the two of you? Nope, we're all good?
Thank you, Mayor.
Then we're just going to take a quick recess. I'll say seven minutes, we need to sit back down at 2:45, council, because we, and we'll all come back up here. We do have more presentations and I believe we also have, oh no, we don't have a closed session or executive session, so, but we do have another presentation. County council members, if you're interested in staying, we're going to get an update on our alternative response from our hope team. So we will stand in recess for seven minutes.